Seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And please call roll.
Dr. Ramona Becker.
Here.
Guy McDonald.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Diane Nguyen.
Here.
We have a quorum mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. And with all meetings, we'll begin with a moment of silent prayer if you'll join me. Amen. Now please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just justice for all.
First item up before council this evening is the consent agenda, which consists only of the amendments of the May 16 council meeting, which is the last time we all met.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Appropriations ordinance, item seven on our agenda here. Total $624,665.52 for this go around. Just a couple of things to point out. $113,000 of that went to debt service on the water and sewer plants. Almost $20,000 in 1907 to be exact went towards the safety surfacing at the park here in Central Park. And just remind everybody that this is being reimbursed by a grant that the city received. So that's always good news. And we have $4,000 for repair at the Harding lift station. And then the big one on there is $296,000 for infrastructure improvements. This was in several housing developments and road projects that we had kind of talked about and able to get going.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 17-11.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. City requested appearances. We have Lonnie Carrier with ICI Insurance is here. No?
No.
Okay.
Hopefully it made off with the right.
No. Okay. Give that rescheduled, hope everything's okay with that. Let's move into proclamations. And I see that we have our Bel Air Lions Club in attendance. And I recognize some of them because I make it about one every 30 meetings. But I love you guys, you guys are awesome. And for those of you guys, I'm sure we're all, we hear about it a lot. I mean, the Bel Air Lions does so much for this city. And we're grateful and so grateful that you guys are here tonight. So with that, I have a, we have three different proclamations this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and read through those. The first one is the Lions Club Centennial Celebration, which is June 7. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas greetings. Whereas the Bel Air Lions Club is a member of the Lions Club International, the world's largest service club organization with 1.4 million members in 46,000 clubs in more than 200 countries and geographical areas. And whereas Lions Club International was founded in 1917 and celebrating 100 years of humanitarian service. And whereas the Bel Air Lions Club established in 2009 is comprised of volunteers who dedicate their time to the betterment of our communities and aiding those in need. And whereas the Bel Air Lions Club is participating in the 100th anniversary as part of the Lions Club International Centennial Celebration. Therefore, I Mayor David Austin of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, in recognition of this important event sponsored by the Bel Air Lions Club, do hereby proclaim June 7, 2017 as Lions Club International Centennial Celebration Day in Bel Air. So, but you know what, before I sign it, tell you what, let's come to the podium. I want, let's let everybody see how many Lions Clubs are here. Okay. I want you, that way, I want the people at home, you're gonna be able to see this, crowd in here. Crowd in here. And that way, yeah, I'll see that Phil, they're seeing the back of your head.
Well, that's the best, that's the best part.
They want to look at the back of my head. No. I want to just, you guys and everybody watching at home, to see this wonderful group and just thank you for everything that you do for the city of Bel Air from, they do a lot of fundraisers and you guys are all volunteers. And things that you purchased for City Hall, things that you purchased for the rec center. And you guys just go on and on. So there's a microphone up here if anybody wanted to make a little push and talk a little bit about what you guys do and maybe mention what meetings are if you want to volunteer. I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Well, I'm the, being president, I would really like to defer this to a couple of other Lions here who have done a lot of work and a couple of the founders of the Bel Air Lions Club are here. You two, you three are the original group. And the rest of us have kind of filtered in over the last couple of years from other places. But the Lions Club, Lions Club in Bel Air has, our centennial project this year was actually done and planned a year to ahead was to build the pavilion that is at the rec center. That came about because we decided to sell snow cones at the rec center during baseball season and Gary was in his third tent before we decided there's got to be a permanent solution to this and raised, we raised the money and built that with a lot of good donations from some businesses here in town. So we do that every, during the baseball season, which is Monday, Wednesday and Thursdays of the month of June. And we serve, serve snow cones or sell snow cones. And starting last night, and I haven't asked how it went, we started selling hot dogs. So it's kind of a fundraiser and a service project. We also do Earth Day and the book fairs up at Isley School, help with their events. We volunteer for the Shred Day and Recycling Day. And we help spread out the numbers of Easter eggs and watch the mob control of the four minutes it takes to collect 10,000 eggs or however many that they put out this last year. We do the Lions Health Screening Unit, we bring it to the Fall Festival. And it, it's a statewide project of Lions and it's a trailer that does blood pressure and eyesight and hearing and all of that. And that will be here this fall. We participate in the Christmas Open House up until this last year, providing the Santa Claus. But he retired last year and we have a different Santa Claus. We participate in Arbor Day events and help put some money into the project to put out the new tree that will be a part of the Christmas Tree Celebration this next year. We give scholarships to the Lions Band Camp, which just ended this last week at Friends University and to Boy State, which is going on this week up at Manhattan. We give assistance in the community to families at Christmas and we contribute to the Kansas Food Bank. And that's what we do locally. And then we're involved in some statewide events. We support the Lions Disaster Trailers. This year, those trailers got used in the fires down around Madison Lodge and that area. And also a year, a year ago with the floods over eastern part of the state. And those are again, supported by the state and we contribute to that. We give to the Lions Sight Foundation, which each Lions Club does that in different forms. We collect glasses, but also we provide eyeglasses sometimes upon request for particularly younger, you know, children. And we do eye testing and we brought the, what's it called?
Spot.
Huh?
Pedivision.
Pedivision testing machine. We brought the first one into the community and was, it was used at Isley and it became, it's now there every year and used at Isley, but it convinced the Wichita School District to buy a machine of their own. And so our machine is available, but also now Wichita School System has one. And that all comes from the fact that our founder in 1917 was accosted on the street by Helen Keller and said, if you have a volunteer group, why don't you help the blind? And Helen Keller, that's been a reason why we do blind work and have done eyesight stuff around the world and we collect eyeglasses. We also support the Kansas Leadership Dogs and Service Dog Association out of Washington, Kansas. And we support the Lions Deaf and Blind Camp, Youth Camp that's held every year at the 4H Camp. And our, one of our members is one of the very active members in doing that up in Manhattan or in south of Junction City at the 4H Camp. So that's what we do. We, our fundraisers besides hot dogs this time of year is, we have the fireworks stand, which you all watched blow away last year once and we had to put back up and then almost got washed out by a flood. We're not hoping for a repeat of that this year.
No.
And then we do a fall dinner in November. We do a dinner at, called Taste of Italy, and that's in November. So we were thankful for the city and its help with us as projects and happy that two of our city council members are Lions Club members. And Mayor David Austin and Guy McDonald are both members. And any of you who want to join, we would welcome you. It just means you have to work hard occasionally, so thank you very much.
Dues is cheap.
Huh?
Dues is very affordable, I'll just say that.
Yeah, $5 for lunch, but we have to take turns cooking. So we check menus before we have you join.
Do you want to tell the folks where the meetings are and when they happen?
Our meetings are second and fourth Wednesdays and we hold them at the Gospel Assembly Church on Oliver. They've been very kind to us and let us use their space at Wednesdays at noon. And so we're there on those two Wednesdays. And we start at 11:30 with lunch and then our meeting is usually 12 to 1 program and any business we have to do. So thank you very much for the proclamation. The governor made this week Lions Week and now this is Lions Night at City Council. The county is doing something this week also with her proclamation as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Need to have you guys all here. Go and read the other two proclamations. We have one for Flag Day, which is coming up on June 14. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas. Whereas the Second Continental Congress adopted the American Flag on June 14, 1777. Whereas June 14, 2017 marks over 236 years of displaying our American Flag. Whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize Old Glory as a symbol of hope, inspiration and pride for the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas, in order to commemorate the adoption of our flag on August 3, 1949, the Congress by joint resolution designated June 14 of each year as Flag Day. Requested that the President issue an annual proclamation designated, designating the week in which June 14 occurs as National Flag Week and call upon citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week. Now therefore, I David Austin, by the power vested in me as mayor, that always sounds so official, of the city of Bel Air and on behalf of the city council and citizens of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim the week of June 11 to 17, 2017 as National Flag Week in the city of Bel Air, Kansas. And I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of our country by displaying our American Flag at their homes and throughout the country. Sign that. Third proclamation is City Management Day to the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas. Whereas the year 2017 is the 100th anniversary of city management in Kansas. And whereas on February 17, 1917, Kansas Governor Arthur Capper signed the bill authorizing the adoption of the city manager form of government by Kansas cities. And whereas on March 9, 1917, electors of Wichita and El Dorado voted to adopt the city manager form and respectively installed their first city managers on June 18 and July 1 in 1917. Whereas today, the city or county manager plan has been adopted in 73 Kansas cities, two counties and serves 24% of the state municipal population. Whereas in addition to the city manager plan, cities in Kansas have an additional 97 cities and 30 counties with professional administrators serving over 67% of the state's municipal population. Whereas the Kansas Association of City/County Management is a professional association representing more than 192 local government administrators who serve Kansas cities and counties and promote strengthening the quality of local government through professional management. Now therefore, I David Austin, by the power vested in me as mayor of the city of Bel Air and on behalf of the city council and citizens of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim June 18, 2017 as the 100th anniversary of City Management Day. Sign that. We can move back to, see Lonnie's here, so Lonnie, I'll go ahead and let you come up to the podium if you would. And we're gonna move back to city requested appearances and Lonnie's with ICI Insurance. She's here for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Austin, council members, Mr. Lasher. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. We've got a special delivery for you. I'll just read this from our information from EMC Insurance Company. But ICI is once again proud to deliver a dividend check for your policy year, contract year of 2016 to 17. ICI partners with almost 80 public entities across Kansas to provide strategies to reduce your total cost of risk while protecting your assets. We are pleased to represent EMC Insurance Company, the largest insurance provider to cities in Kansas. While we do represent other insurance carriers, they are one of the oldest and have residents in downtown Wichita. So this is the 35th year the KMU Safety Group with over 450 cities participating. And ICI is proud to be one of the largest brokers representing EMC. We've enjoyed the relationship with the city of Bel Air since 1983. We've seen a lot of changes obviously since you guys started, but it's been a great relationship and we can look forward to continuing ways to help you guys improve your bottom line and serve your needs. The check for that policy term of 1617 is for $14,668.
Wow.
Yeah, that's the largest one we delivered to you guys. The last one, I think, that was close to this was $9,000. But it relates to the entire group of cities across the state having a good safety track record and good policy claims representation throughout the state. And so when they, you know, when that happens, they're able to provide money back in form of a dividend program. And that program was set up, like I said, about 35 years ago. It's been a great relationship for, and stabilization of the insurance program for cities throughout the state of Kansas. So anyway, with that, I'll present that to the question.
Yeah, thank you. Should, could we get a picture of the JV together?
I got one with Lonnie.
Oh, with him with it, okay.
Yeah, well, whatever you guys want to do, but we do appreciate the relationship and look forward to many more years hopefully. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but certainly nice to deliver checks like that to organizations like yours, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sure you'll put it to good use, so.
Yes.
We'll do it.
We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Before moving into reports, Gary Northwall is here from the Tree Board and wants to talk about membership. He and I exchanged a couple of emails today, or this week, last week. So we do have, coming up at our next meeting, not this one, we'll have some appointments, some that are coming due in June, and there were some on the Tree Board. The one member that is expiring, membership that is expiring is Fred Cabala, and I have spoken with him and he would like to stay on, so we'll have him at the next meeting to be reappointed to the Tree Board. But with that, Gary, I'd like to invite you to come to the podium and talk to us about the Tree Board.
Well, I'm here tonight, Mayor Austin, council members, to announce that we have two new volunteers to fill our two open positions for the Bel Air Tree Board. The first volunteer is Mark Garrett. I have to get you the spelling of the name, it doesn't look like Garrett. Mark learned of the Tree Board vacancies through a notice that we put in the city's utility bill several months ago. I believe some of you met him at the Arbor Day, talked to him at the Arbor Day celebration. Second applicant is Sylvia McCombs. And Mayor Austin, I can get you both spellings and phone numbers.
Please.
You call those folks and talk to them, don't you? I warned them. Sylvia is a Sedgwick County Extension Master Gardener. Diane Martin, who also is a member of the Tree Board, or sorry, a member of the Tree Board, is also a Sedgwick County Extension Master Gardener. And she invited Sylvia to attend a few meetings and to consider joining the board. They were, Mark and Sylvia were both at our last meeting and I said, I assume you're here because you wouldn't mind joining the board. And I got affirmative answers to those. So I asked the council to consider and hopefully approve these applicants to the board. This is, if I read the ordinance, we just have a new ordinance 616. If I read the ordinance correctly, when two new members are appointed to the board at the same time, one of the two will be appointed for a three-year term and one will be appointed for a one-year term. So I asked that Mark be appointed to the three-year term as he was the first one to get in touch with the board. I emailed both Mark and Sylvia about this and Sylvia said thanks, so I assume she approves. So that's all I have.
Wonderful.
Questions? I'll email you the phone numbers.
I just want to say, I think it's wonderful that you got people contacting and committed they want to be on.
Yeah.
That's wonderful, thank you. We will move into reports. Actually, before we do that, we need to welcome Jaclyn Kelly. Our new city attorney is here, so I want to welcome you. We've talked about that at other meetings and it's a long process and we're glad to have you on board and you're now officially full-time and here and smiling, so we like that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And then before we get to individual reports, I want to, as promised, I'm gonna give a little recap and I'm gonna pass out a copy. It's fairly lengthy, I wrote down so that everybody has them and I'll make sure that Mr. McDonald gets a copy of it. But just, I want to talk a little bit about the conference that I attended here a couple of weeks ago, representing the city. And just to kind of give some of my takeaways on that. More than 37,000 people were in attendance at the recon, that's what they call it, it's called the Global Convention, put on by the International Council of Shopping Centers. I'm thrilled that Bel Air has reached the point where it made sense for us to attend. For three full days, this huge conference provided networking, deal making and educational opportunities for retail and real estate professionals from around the world. And I'd like to say, if anybody up here wants to, this is what got my suitcase to .3 pounds of being overweight. But I have a, just a ton of my notes. I have, I took lots of pictures of the sessions I attended, business cards of people I spoke with and information from some of the retail outlets. And we'll be happy to organize that here and we'll leave that in my office and welcome anybody at any time, because it's really fascinating stuff to look at. As you know, over the past five years, we've made great strides in growing and establishing residential and commerce. We have also listened to our citizens through a survey and open house. I completely understand now why this was the time for a city official to attend this conference, as we are primed to establish our identity and step into retail development. This momentum is exactly what we need and is what we needed and need to take this next step. I used the time attending educational sessions and visiting with as many representatives as I could from the over 1,200 exhibitors from other cities, developers and businesses. It was great to network with other cities, communities and regional economic developers, city managers, mayors and planners and learn what methods they took and are taking to move from where they are, like a bedroom community, to establishing retail locations. I also spent time talking with many national retailers to see exactly what they look for when choosing where to expand. Multiple developers and retailers noted they were impressed a city official was making the effort to visit with them. And many of the economic developers said this is exactly what we need to be doing for credibility. And that is also a good sign to have the city onboard and engaged from the very beginning. Bel Air is unique. All of us, we know that. We have land, lots of land. I spoke to, oh, probably 45 different cities, I'd have to count all the cards, and could not find another similar situation to what we have here in Bel Air. The closest and probably one of, some of the most meaningful conversations I had was when I spoke with Shane McFarland, he's the mayor of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. They recently, just last fall, bought 123 acres and that was an old farm, kind of as he said, in the middle of nowhere. But they're now using that to focus on baseball and softball diamonds, which will grow into a recreational facility and kind of launch the next stage in Murfreesboro. And talking with the more than 40 economic development professionals alone at one time gave me great insight. I'll let you know, when I spoke with all these folks, at first I was discouraged, including when talking with those from Murfreesboro, Tennessee, because they've got mountains and, you know, Nashville's a very big city near there. Because a lot of the, well, just about every single one of the great developments there were born out of several different things, out of historic revitalization or town squares or taking advantage of national beauty, including mountains, hills, forests, waterfronts, et cetera. Do want to point out that Ponca City, Dodge City, Kansas and Topeka, Kansas had booths, but that was it for our region. And I sent a picture to Ty Lash and Ramona Becker because when I, when Dodge City saw that I was there, they made me put on a cowboy hat and pose for a picture. But that was, like I said, that was it from our region. But there are several takeaways that I'd like to share. I'm gonna share seven of them here. Number one, we continue doing what we are doing, and that is listening to our citizens with things like the survey and the open house we had just a couple of weeks ago, to help us shape what I believe to be a golden opportunity. And I do think this land is a golden opportunity. Gathering places. Number two, with mixed-use developments, this is the future. We heard this in the survey and at the open house too, and it's absolutely what I heard at the conference. It's all about quality of life. Safe place for kids to play and safe places for kids to ride their bikes, et cetera. Number three, retail is far from dead and in fact, is a catalyst for economic development. Some of the points that, in that session, were that the consumer index confidence is rising. The other indicators that retailers are looking at is that people are starting to buy furniture and cars once again. And those were items that during a recession are repaired and held on to as opposed to when the economy's getting better and they said that people are buying that again. An example close to home shared in one of the educational sessions was Pay Less Shoes is closing. We all saw the headlines, Pay Less Shoes is closing, oh my gosh. Fake news, I guess you could call it, that, you know, retail's dead, brick and mortar's going away. But what they didn't tell at the same time is that Designer Shoe, or DSW, I think that's Designer Shoe Warehouse, Famous Footwear, Rack Room Shoes, Shoe Carnival and Skechers all added stores. And in fact, the stores that they added are more than the number of stores that Pay Less closed. So kind of talking about that sometimes trends change. There's also been some real retail growth in several other industries. In fact, every five hours, a Dollar General opens up somewhere in America. Grocery stores are opening up. Those are, and we've seen that even kind of in our area with a lot of the organic stores coming. Again, keeping up with the trends. While e-commerce is growing, stores are only seeing anywhere from seven to nine usage rate, which I found fascinating, because that's another thing we had heard. Everyone's buying online, no one is going into stores. But they're finding ways to get people who buy online to come into the stores, for example, for return. for returns, easy returns, or reward points or something if you come back into the store. And this is something that, when it was pointed out to me, a light bulb went off in my head because, I'll admit, my wife and I had just done this very thing and did not realize it. That most people, some of the folks said that, you know what, people come into our stores, but they come in to buy, they don't come in to shop. Very confusing. Because you come in to buy, not shop. They're doing their shopping online, but they're buying, in other words, they're doing all the browsing, they don't come in and look at everything. They've already done their research online, they know what's on sale, they know the items they want to look at when they go into the store, but they still want to touch and feel. And that's something, the story I'll share, you know, it's something, my wife and I just bought a couch, and we did that exact same thing. When I walked into Slumberland, I told the sales lady, here's the two couches we want to look at. When I walked into Havertys, I said, here's the couch we want to look at. So that, that's what's happening. That was somewhat reassuring to see that's happening out there, and that's the light bulb that, like I said, went off with me. Number four, we need to keep the dream alive about a major tenant like Costco, I know we've talked about that up here, coming to Bel Air. But we need to realize that it's a long ways off at this time. Big stores have exact formulas that must be met. So we need, need to stop thanking Wall Street, and I think, start thanking local franchise slash owner. And again, a lot of the materials in here, you can see those exact formulas as to why Costco isn't going to come here at this time. People have approached, they cannot get a Panera Bread to open up in downtown Wichita because it does not meet the exact formula. And they have those. Number five, we should start small, something like a small retail center, like a local coffee shop, perhaps a casual restaurant, I think near Next Level Hoops possibly, for their employees and the employees in our Commerce Park. I'd like to see if there are some professionals in Bel Air, like, for example, lawyers, dentists, insurance agents, et cetera, who would like to possibly lease an office space here. And we'd come up with a couple of strip centers that would get things rolling. In fact, Strip Center is ready to go in at 45th and Rock when we find these tenants. Number six, and I can't emphasize this enough, we need to market our quality of life. This is why we had the meetings, this is why we had the survey. And number seven, what was preached over and over, that there is real value in economic development and land development. Excuse me. This is why I printed off the report for the council members up here. I'd also like to share some suggestions I have and ask the governing body that we consider these in the future. One, retail recruitment is not an event. The process takes time. Quality growth is orderly growth, and orderly growth takes time. So the first and biggest one, my suggestion, is that we hire a land planner slash developer, if even at part-time, to work side-by-side our realtor, our city manager, our city engineer, and our city attorney. I feel this is important for many reasons. In addition to taking some of these duties off of our city manager's plate, giving him time to be a city manager instead of a developer, I see that as a win-win. I'll let you know that Marlon Penner and I discussed this at length, and he has what I think is a good suggestion, and that is on the report up here, but I'm not going to read that name out loud. But that is something that I'd like us to possibly think about, is adding a land developer, maybe put that under economic development. And as we're looking at our budget now, that might be the time. Number two, beginning with a complete revamp of the Community Development Committee with committed and creative individuals. We should create events that create gathering spaces that give opportunities for our citizens to interact with one another. In other words, have them be a little bit more forward. Marketing of our city needs, needs to include photos and stats of what we are, highlighting the quality of life again. I'm envisioning gathering events, and these are just themes that I wrote late at night, like bouncy houses, activity lessons such as archery, why not unicycle riding, you know, something fun and unique, drone flying, outdoor yoga, we've talked about a farmer's market. What about a vegetable crawl? We don't have brewers here, we have, a lot of people have gardens. Beanbag toss tournaments are gaining popularity. If we could have live music and/or movies one Friday a month, something like that outside. Having something on a fairly regular, regular schedule can create a natural gathering spot, unique and fun. At first, we can begin with food trucks and opening up City Hall for the restaurants, but this is what can grow and attract retailers. With some work and help for our lone marketing manager, I would hope some of this could be sponsored, keeping caution absolute minimum. This could be a great placeholder for the land that isn't making us a dime at this time. Number four, I do not like the idea of city owning and operating businesses, but we could try to kickstart it with a private slash public partnership with something unique. And again, I have some ideas in here. We have seen this work great in nearby cities with a water park and not so great with an amusement park. Keeping in the theme of gathering spaces, making recreation an anchor. We've had 10 years of false starts and excitement that never came to fruition. We will need to do a lot more research on this, obviously, in adding other events before any action takes place. But in conclusion, the term, I'd just like to share this, that the term vision is used a lot, but rarely with municipalities. Being reasonably strategic with where we want to go and this opportunity is something we can do. So, again, that's kind of some of the takeaways and things that I gleaned from attending this massive conference a couple of weeks ago. And look forward to sharing any more of that information specific with any one of you. And again, with that, if you guys would consider any of those suggestions, maybe that's something we could talk about in the, in the near future. So, with that, I'm going to now get to our reports, and we'll start with council members, and we'll start with Dr. Becker.
Okay. Excuse me. Well, I attended the open house, and I thought we had a lot of very good information there with some excellent engineers and experts in their fields that were really knowledgeable and had a lot to share with us. I was just disappointed that we didn't have a larger crowd. We did have to change the date, but it's a shame that people missed out on that great resource because there was a lot of good information there. And so, that was a nice evening. I also got my cast off, I wanted to report. And, you know, this experience of just having this little cast on my arm for a month or so, it just made me feel so much more empathy for people who have disabilities. Because this was a very small thing that I had to put up with for a very short time. And yet, everything you do, you're reminded that you have something that's kind of hampering you a little bit. So, I think we all need to have a lot more empathy and understanding of people that have lifelong disabilities and things that hamper their lives, and acknowledge how much courage they have to be able to cope with that in the ways that they do. So, that was kind of a life lesson for me. And then my second life lesson I had as soon as I got my cast off was that our wonderful puppy ate my glasses one night while I was in bed. And so now, I only have one pair of spare prescription glasses, and I'm one of those people who's almost blind without my glasses. I can't even find my glasses without my glasses. So I had this one fear, if I ever lost my glasses, I would look for the glasses. So I'm not trying to be summery or anything, wearing sunglasses. But this is the only pair of glasses I had. And so, I've been a proud dog owner all of my life, I've always had dogs, even when I was a child, and I've never yet had a dog eat my glasses before. And he didn't eat them completely, just part of them, you know, like the bows and the little things around his nose. But he tore them all up so they could be repaired. And so that's a new, new experience for me, but we're going to keep him because he's going to wear them. This was a one-time experience, I'm sure, because he'll never have a chance again to get my glasses, I can promise you that. Then I wanted to have, share another little story with you here and tell you that we've experienced firsthand that Bel Air people really love to be outdoors in a beautiful park-like area, because our neighborhood, our homeowners association in Bel Air Heights recently completed the sidewalk that goes all around the Cave and Pond, which is the great common area in our neighborhood. And we have literally had hundreds of people walking around our pond since we completed that sidewalk this summer, and it's just been amazing. I mean, it's just like people coming out of the woodwork, people I've never seen before, you know? And we're really pleased because, of course, that's why we did complete the sidewalk, because we wanted more people to be able to enjoy that wonderful pond in our neighborhood. It's a great resource for our members, but it's not a public place. And I want to be sure to emphasize this, because I think we've got a lot of people coming in now that just see it driving by and they think, oh, what a beautiful place, I better go enjoy that. And the homeowners actually pay for it, and I mean, our homeowners association pays for everything. And it costs a lot of money to keep up the parks, just like the city knows, because we have so many city parks. We're making new signings to remind people that it's not public, and we understand that people love the pond area, but it is not a taxpayer-supported attraction. And so, I just wanted to share that, because the point is that judging from the number of people that we've had enjoying our little pond since we finished that sidewalk, people in Bel Air just love parks, and they love to be outside with their families. And I, even though I'm sure there are people out there who really don't pay the dues and are just from other places other than our neighborhood, it really warms my heart, you know, to see people outdoors like that, just enjoying nature. And so, I just wanted to kind of share that with you, because evidently, we might need some more parks in the northeast area of Bel Air, because I've seen so many people out enjoying that. And lastly, I just want to say how much we appreciate our city manager, and I'm glad we're having a recognition of that with the proclamation and everything, because ours, we have a good city manager who does a lot of work for our city. And I think he's really helped Bel Air to grow. We've been through hard times and good times, and we're kind of on a roll right now with development here in the area. And I think a lot of that is, we can thank our city manager for all the hard work he's done. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I was going to echo that same thing. Thank you, Mr. Lasher. We couldn't do without you, and I appreciate that we're having that special time. Maybe you can have some time off to enjoy. And Ramona, I'm so sad, you mean I can't come over to the lake?
Well, you're a guest. You know, we have guests, but...
I'm kidding, I have my, I have my own lake, it's okay.
I do want to invite all of you to come and see.
It's okay, it's okay.
And stay a little while.
It's okay, it's okay. Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your report. It was so exciting, and I'm so glad that we were able to send you, and I was, thank you for sharing back with us. And just, I'm anxious to look through that when we have some time and go over, because I think there's great things ahead. I also want to say, today, it was so neat, when I came back into town, I was gone to see the flags commemorating the D-Day today, several people had put those up. And I did want to say, I was sorry that I didn't get to come to the open house, we had to leave for Nationals. But I did want to say that for the first time ever at Nationals, we, this year's in Louisville, it changes every year, I coach debate and forensics, we had one of our senior girls that just graduated make it to octa-finals, which means a top 48 in the nation, and that was incredible. She didn't make it to the quarter semis, but Bethany Reader made it to the octa-finals, so that was exciting. And I got to take in also, go to watch a few horse races that we're practicing. And then I just wanted to welcome our attorney, and I felt bad I didn't get to come this week and welcome you, I've been in and out, and I'm leaving again this week, but welcome. And we just are so excited to be able to have you here, and we look forward to working with you. So, yes, that's all my report, thank you, Mayor.
I also attended the open house and visited with the engineers and various people who were there. And many of you may not know that many, many years back, I worked for a residential developer. And I will tell you that the only way you can have full control is to own the land. So the guy from Murfreesboro, they had 123 acres of whatever you say.
123.6 to be exact, but...
He has complete control over that 123.6 acres. Bel Air has a little bit of a different kind of thing to this, because there have been several master plans.
Right.
Since, I'm not sure the exact year that number one came out, but I've seen most of them. But that's also very normal when you have the scope of what we have, because it changes as you go. So I, I think right now, we are at a good time, and we need to make really good progress because one never knows what's around the corner. The reason the residential developer that I worked for left the Wichita area was because overnight interest rates went to 17%. Now, they've been very low, and that's very positive for this, and we've been able to refinance some of the debt and that type of thing. So those are very positive things. But I can tell you that that can happen overnight. And that'll make a heck of a difference if that does ever happen. But I think that we have a lot of good ideas on the table, and I think there just needs to be a concerted effort to continue to draw the current residents into that this is their home, although maybe not everyone is like I, who I landed here when my children were small, and I'm still here, and one of my sons moved back here now too, and even his children are fairly grown. So, you know, that's a, that's change. As I was driving down a couple of streets that I hadn't driven down recently, when I first moved here, my gosh, it was lots and lots and lots and lots of kids, you know? Well, we're old now.
Not all of us.
We're old now. I didn't see as many kids, but it was funny, because I did see, just on this one street, several people come out of their house about the same time to get in their cars and what have you. And they were younger couples and probably had children and that kind of thing. So, Bel Air's kind of been a senior-type community for a little while, very, very, you know, multiple...
And you looked at me.
I'm older than you are, remember?
I don't think so.
Uh-huh, we had that discussion. But anyway, that's, I, I think we, we do need to be very careful about who we put in positions, and we need to get some committees going. It is very much one of the things that I spoke with, and I'm not sure I remember which one now, but one of the guys that was here at the open house. You have to get people started coming out of their houses. This has been a bedroom community. We have to get them out of their houses. And so, some of those kinds of events. And, you know, and it's not that we haven't had those in the past, we did, we had Bel Air Days and various things like that, that were cheap entertainment, quite frankly, and a ways to get together. And then we went through a spell where there wasn't much of that. So we're getting back to it now, and happy to see that. And that's all, thank you.
Ms. Mardine?
Well, I also attended the open house, and I was...
Well, I also attended the open house, and I was delighted to see the board with the farmer's market, had a whole bunch of stickers on it. So, hopefully, we can still keep that in the bucket and get it finalized and get it started, and maybe not this year, but hopefully next year. But I was very surprised that there were that many people that wanted the farmer's market. I talked to a lot of people about parks, sidewalks, and I asked, I did talk to two of the employees, that maybe they should tell the people that wanted sidewalks, which I think's great, but once those sidewalks are put in and something happens to them, that property owner is responsible to repair it. And I need to probably confer with Mr. Lasher to make sure that's a true statement.
That's correct.
And I don't think a lot of people realize that. They think once the city puts these sidewalks in, that their repair will be on there, but I didn't think it was my place to be telling them, "Well, once they're put in and a truck runs over and breaks it, you have to fix it." And I'm not sure how much a sidewalk costs, but they, with the regulations and stuff of how you have to put them in and the thickness and stuff, it's not cheap for the property owner that has to spend that much money by himself. In fact, years ago, there was a couple that, both of them were working jobs, they had four children, they got sent a letter and said they had to fix the sidewalk, and they couldn't afford it. And they said, "Well, you don't fix it, we're putting it against your property tax." They put their house up for sale and sold it in three days, and we're out of here. So, the people need to be aware that we want to do this stuff, but we have to have the money available to do it at the time. But there were quite a few people that I talked to at the open house, and some of them were happy, some of them were not, but other than that, that was, it was a good thing. And I'm hoping that on our workshop, we finally get those reports. That was, I thought there would be probably a report tonight, but maybe they didn't have time to, staff didn't have time to get it all together. But I think the council and the mayor should know the turnout of those reports, especially what the people stickered on the parks, sidewalks, and farmer's market, and what they would like to see, so we could give it out to the public to start working on it. And that's all I have, Mayor.
A lot of that goes back to kind of what Councilmember Wynn stated, that, yeah, we need people to, folks, and I think if we get that spirit going again, like you spoke about, Councilmember Wynn, that would be fantastic, get these things going again and new ones started. So, that, Paul talked about the open house. That was nice, and I didn't hear anything negative, so kind of curious about that, but was excited to talk to, of course, I got there towards the second half of it, literally came, literally straight from the airport here. We do have a workshop on Thursday for the CCUA to go over its budget. It's always a fun once-a-year activity, so we have that coming up. Then, the only other thing just to make mention of, and I'm probably stealing some of Mr. Lasher's thunder here, is that, of course, with the summer, our swimming pools open, and baseball and T-ball and softball games have all started up at the rec center. So, excited to see all those people out there and just people be aware of that. And again, just like to welcome our new city attorney once again with that. And with that, would you like to say a few words, or do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I joined the staff just two days ago, so I don't have a formal report yet.
You've had two days.
I'm getting on it. But I will say that I was very warmly welcomed by the staff. You've got an awesome staff here. Ty has just been wonderful, getting me adjusted, and I'm getting familiar with the specific legal matters going on here in Bel Air, and I'll have a more substantive report next week.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did let Jackie kind of organize her office yesterday, but I gave her two projects today. They need my Friday, so.
That's right.
And so, we're glad to have her here. You're right, Central Park Pool is open. They'll be providing swimming lessons again this year. I think there's three different times throughout the summer that they have swimming lessons, so if anybody at home has kids that they want to go put in swimming lessons, Central Park Pool can do that. A lot of things happening, like the mayor said, this month, this Saturday, we've got the brush sites open, so if people want to get reminded of when the brush site is open, you can go to our website and sign up, and you'll get a notification when the brush site is open, so if you'd like to attend more than once a summer. Citywide garage sales are coming up in a couple weeks, June 22nd through the 24th. So, council waived the permit fees, and so, people can hopefully be planning on that, and we'll get the word out that Bel Air's having their citywide garage sales to let others know. The curb side cleanup, our first one of the year, will be July 1st, so that's the Saturday after the citywide garage sales. So, if there's things that didn't get sold and you don't want to donate them, then you can put them in the curb, and Waste Connections will pick those up. And to follow up on Ms. Martine's question about reports, we have those scheduled. At the workshop will be one. Law King will come and talk about the Park Master Plan, so that's one of the agenda items for the workshop. And then, we'll have the engineer here from Call Valley at the next council meeting to talk about Eagle Lake and, let's say, Height Pond. So, got them in the schedule to let you and the citizens know, you know, kind of what's been going on. And of course, the one at the workshop, the reason we're doing that, the workshop, is because they want your input. They're going to share, you know, what they've received so far, but they want your input and direction on moving forward to get to the final plan. So, that's all I had, Mayor.
We'll get to ordinance's resolutions and final action. We have a relatively short agenda here. I do want to remind everybody, we will have a very brief land bank meeting immediately following this meeting. Those are, you know, it's exciting that we're doing those. We have a quote for street paving, which has something else that's extremely exciting, and we'll talk about our burdency of water supply plan. So, with that, let's jump right into it. The first thing, item A, is the Andale Paving Quote. The council has spent several workshops discussing street improvements for 2017. Hedgerow from Forty-Fifth Street to the Sunrise property was established as a top priority. Council felt that a total reconstruction using cement was the best option. And I see Anne, our city engineer, is here, so she requested a quote from Andale Paving, which came in at three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-one cents. So, I want to see if anybody had any questions, or Anne, if you wanted to expand upon that at all.
I would like to welcome Chet Beers with Andale Paving, sitting right behind me, so I'm going to put him on the spot. He's here, if you have any questions of Andale. And this will be a similar project to what we did over on Edgemore, except going from the edge of the existing homes all the way out to Forty-Fifth. That will all be paved, concrete paving. There's a little bit of curb and gutter replacement, but we're not going to be replacing all of it. So, there will be some inconvenience to homeowners. Andale did an excellent job on the Edgemore project, working with homeowners to get them in and out of the project. Chet could probably talk a little bit about proposed phasing. I'm not sure how much they've gotten into that, but if you have any questions, either myself or Chet would be able to answer them.
I'd like to ask him. Just so the public can hear, can you tell us the timeframe when you're wanting to start this and when you anticipate, because that's the number-one question that people are asking me.
Right now, we're probably starting in the fall. I'm going to guess the project will take no longer than a month, probably a little shorter than that. So, Anne asked that it would be done before the end of the year, and we'd probably like to get it done before November, December, when it gets cold nasty out.
Right. Well, they were hoping it would be done before school started, and I said, "I don't think that's possible."
Yeah. Not sure that can happen.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
I'd like to ask you, we have homeowners in our association for our homeowners that live on the east side of that street. How do those people get to their homes while you're doing this?
For most of the construction, the first couple of phases, they will have access most of the time. There might be an hour or two within the day that they can't get to their jobs or to their homes and in and out. We will coordinate with them and leave everybody know when they can and can't go. When we pave, there will be probably a forty-eight-hour window to where they're going to have to park down the street and walk to their homes. We've made special arrangements for people that have special needs to get to their homes, and it's kind of an individual basis of how we can get them in and out and who needs access and when.
And so, most of the time, they'll be able to drive their car to their garage?
Most of the time. There will be about a forty-eight-hour period when we pave and after we pave that the concrete has cure, and we can't let people in and out.
Sure. That's understandable. Okay, thank you.
And I want to follow up with that. When you guys, they did Edgemore, and it's almost probably twice that. You did a great job of letting us know, and I think everyone just was able to make plans because of it.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Any other questions? Before we move into, hold on, just to let the public know, this is something, we've spent about a part of six months of really going over priorities and looking at them. Like I said, we had talked about, you know, patching, repairing, overlaying versus complete reconstruction. Like I said, council wanted to move with the construction, and the three hundred and thirteen thousand was something we had in the budget. Do we speak, so just everybody knows at home, so that's part of the, we're going to start making that a priority, start doing some of these street projects, so. And I'm excited to get one started, probably one of the most needed ones. Is that wonderful?
Mr. Mayor, may I follow up with Anne? And then, the repairs that were going to be done on, I lost some...
Farmstead.
Farmstead. And those are going to be done with our staff throughout the summer?
Correct. Our staff has actually started some of those repairs.
Oh, good.
They've started crack sealing. They're waiting for all of our staff to be present before we start milling out some of the thermal cracks, the wider cracks.
Sure.
We've had various vacations and sicknesses and doctor's appointments that we're planning around. But yes, we were planning on starting those this week, but then we had a doctor's appointment that we needed to deal with. So, I'm hopeful probably next week, you'll start seeing some improvements over there.
Thank you.
Well, we're glad of that, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the quote from Andale Paving for Hedgerow street replacement at a cost not to exceed three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-one cents, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Are there any questions or comments? All on paper say aye?
Aye.
Oh, the same as aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Next, item B. KDHE requires any entity who provides potable water that they have an emergency water supply plan, and this is something we've got to adopt every single year. This plan identifies emergency responses as well as numbers of people to contact. We actually used this plan during the CCA Water Boil issue last month, one of those things that, oh, good to have, but you'll never use it. Well, we used it. So, Utility Advisory Committee reviewed the plan along with the public work staff and found that no changes to make. And again, city engineer is here to answer any questions, if you have any, but again, this is something that we kind of do every year.
There was actually a few minor changes...
Oh, were there?
...that the Utility Advisory Board found. Most of them were in complete sentences and words that were not in the correct order, so those have been changed. And we are looking at not this being a living document and as we see things that come forward. One of the things that we want to get in here that we haven't yet that does not affect the KDHNE is a listing of all restaurants, all food service places, places that are very important that we'll not only use for the water supply, but any other emergencies that we have, so we can kind of continue to develop as a city and have a more well-rounded emergency plan. And that's something that I've talked with the chief, Attar Berry, about, and we, and Tristan, Community Development, to make sure that we continue to learn from issues that we've had come up and make sure that we have a better response for our citizens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve the 2017 City of Bel Air Emergency Water Supply Plan and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Any questions or comments? All on paper say aye?
Aye.
Oh, the same as aye. Okay. Next, there are several appointments that come up at the end of June, so just wanted to, this kind of heads up for council, we'll have these on our meeting agenda here in a couple of weeks. Heard from Gary earlier, a couple of folks from the Tree Board, and Fred Cabala wanting to be reappointed as well. I know that we have a couple of opening, a couple of terms expiring on the Planning Commission and one on the CDC, so we'll reach out to all of those folks and confirm all of that, and try to get all that stuff to you guys. But one of the, a new one, just so, because like I said, everybody else will be a reappointment, but Gordon Jones has served on the Planning Commission for over ten years, and in talking with him, I learned some interesting things about when he was a guardsman back here, long before this was a city, and he told us about how he would be the one to call upon to go load up a truck with water when it ran out, had a, just has some great stories, a lot of history with him. But due to some personal reasons, health reasons, he said that after ten years, it's time that he take a step back and let someone else come in. So, I want to, who I planned to nominate in a couple of weeks is David Floyd, stating that, because I spoke with him, and he likes to serve on the Planning Commission. Have a resume from him, which was included in the council packet, so you can see that. He's done some, he's actually in school, taking classes in economic development. He does some work with Jimmy John's Restaurants and site selections and all of that. He knows all about infrastructure needs and codes, so I think he would be an excellent addition to the, to the Planning Commission to replace Gordon Jones. And like I said, we'll have that on the agenda in a couple of weeks. So, no action that needs to be taken on that, just kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I do have a question. I did not know this was opening, and I also would have known Gordon, you know, forever and knew some of his background, not all of it, but his interest in appraisals and that kind of thing. In reading Mr. Floyd's resume, I wasn't really very impressed because most everything that's on there was accounting. And as I spoke about planning for the future, the Planning Commission is going to have a lot more work than they have had in the recent past. So, I was a little concerned about this person and about the fact that none of us knew about it, or at least I didn't. I had to ask Ramona if she knew about it in passing, and she didn't. But, you know, is this something that we could bring another nominee in or something?
Absolutely.
Because, again, we've got to get people active, and if it's only...
I'll let you know, there's actually three terms that are coming up on the Planning Commission. The reason why I'm not mentioning specific names is there's been, we talked about vacations or like Anne, there's a couple of folks I've not spoken with that there may possibly be. The other individual, he said that he would like to be reappointed, one of the active ones, and there's still a third term, a third person on the Planning Commission that I have not yet been able to speak to to see if she wants to be reaffirmed or not. So, there very well could be two openings anyway. But yeah, just, again, this is just a heads up. You guys kind of asked for more advanced notice on some of this stuff. on some of this stuff, so just wanted to kind of put that out there. We can certainly talk about it at the workshop. David, I think, would be a fine addition, again, because of working with restaurants and his schooling and education and interest in all of that with infrastructure and codes. He mentioned he'd be happy to come to the workshop, be happy to talk with any single one of you at any time. So, you have contact information on there, so.
I'd like that.
Yeah, I think it's great that he wants to do it, and he's young and has ideas. I think it's great. We need new, new, new people.
That's actually one of the things that Gordon said.
We need new people, yes.
Well, I'd be interested if Diane had somebody in mind that wanted to also serve to see their resume.
You can have him send that to me if you...
So, the whole public.
And that's actually, that I was going to close out by saying, just to let, that's why I'm doing this here in an open meeting, is to let the public know, and you heard me talk about, that I think there's a committee that we need to infuse, too. So, we do have four different committees that we've heard about on Tree Board, we've heard about the Utility Advisory Committee, we have a Planning Commission, we have Community Development Committee. There's folks out there interested. I would encourage you to contact me, the chairperson of those committees, or let one of us know if that's something you have an interest in for that. So, and we do appreciate all of our volunteers and all of that, so. We'll have that up there. Also, we need to reappoint folks to the CCUA. Ken Lee's appointment is up, as well as Peggy O'Donnell's. So, that's something that, I did speak with Ken, he was one, he said he would be willing to serve another term, if that's...
We voted at the CCUA to coincide with the election.
Yeah.
Right. So, my appointment will be up.
Right. Just letting people know that that's coming up as well, so.
And I won't be on again, because I won't be running, so. There you go. But we did vote, I didn't know if you were there that meeting.
I think I was.
Right. To the CCUa appointments, we're going to, didn't we say that? We're going to do them with the election, so.
I think Park City went ahead and did theirs, but then they made it for six months or something like that.
Oh, well, we could do that, and then I could go off.
If you guys are fine leaving it as is to coincide with the, that's something we, yeah, we talked about that at the workshop maybe coming up.
Yeah.
Okay. Alrighty. Next item, our final item here, item D, is consideration of rescheduling the first city council meeting in July, reason on occasion, regular council meeting will fall on a holiday. This is the case with our first meeting in July falling on July 4th. So, I would suggest that the meeting be rescheduled to Monday, July 3rd, or to Wednesday, July 5th. Is that...
I would prefer the 3rd, if that's available.
Monday?
Because I have commitments on Wednesday night.
I was thinking maybe it might be better to have it on Wednesday, because then if families were going out of town and everything for the holiday, they'd be back in town on Wednesday.
Well, Monday's not a holiday, so everybody has to work. It's not a national holiday.
No, they're getting off, a lot of people are getting off on Monday.
Are we all off? I mean, are we all not here?
I have to take, I have to take a vacation day if I want July 3rd off.
Right.
That's what I was referring to.
Which I will.
No out of town.
Well, let's ask our staff, are you guys going to be here the 3rd?
Yeah, I'll be here.
So, we could do...
Or is that something where, let me ask, and with our new city attorney, 48 hours into the new job, yeah, talking about that being a holiday week, you know, we do have a workshop and meeting scheduled the next week. We could even push it back one week, but that really...
Messes up your paychecks. We did that one year, and the employees got upset when we did fast appropriations. I still remember that.
You guys want to be paid?
When this fell, well, this fell like this a few years ago, and we moved it to Monday, because if we don't do, we waited, and you can't do that on checks unless we just had a special...
Yeah, that's correct, because council approves appropriations, so we hold those checks until the appropriations approved, and then we send out the checks the next day.
I've got emails on that one.
Well, it's like a July 3rd, then, unless...
If you guys are going to be here, I'll be here.
Yeah.
City Hall's open July 3rd.
I'll be working. I can guarantee you.
Right, okay. So, is Monday good for everyone?
Bye.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to move the first city council meeting in July to July 3rd.
I'll second.
All on paper say aye?
Aye.
Oh, the same sign. Okay. Next is discussion and future issues. Our regularly scheduled workshop is next Tuesday at 6:30. Want to see if that works for everyone. So far, agenda items include fireworks, our 2018 budget, and Park's master plan presentation and those reports. If there's anything else that you'd like to add to that agenda, then let us know.
I'd like to add something, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
I think several, several months ago, we talked about this, the having a primary, and it's a charter ordinance, and we never did, to my knowledge, finish that. I'm not sure now if it's, if you hold the primary or you don't hold the primary, because at first, they checked, and then I think Mr. Lasher found from Jamie that we're back in on a primary.
Well, we didn't have enough people.
Well, I know that, but I want that on the workshop to discuss, because I don't want the city to pay for a primary ever. That's a lot of money. And I think that charter ordinance for the primaries should be put back on, so we can discuss that, and then each one can state their own feelings of how they feel about the primary.
I think it's stated you had to have four for each position, so we would have had to have 16 people.
Right.
Right.
But still, there was one year that we had, I think there, what was there, 16 or 18 people that ran for council when we were over in the old building? That was before you got on.
Yeah, I don't know.
And that's when they put in this primary.
Most I've ever run against is nine. So, I don't know.
So, I think we should discuss that, and then council can state their feelings. But I personally don't want to pay for a primary. I don't care how many people run.
Well, you know, I had a conversation with the election office, because they called me to be a poll worker, and, because I've done that for many years. And I said, well, I'm running for council, and so I don't know if we're going to have a primary. And she says, no, Bel Air is not going to have a primary. So, the election office told me that Bel Air is not going to have a, this was before everybody had filed. And so, she seemed pretty sure that we weren't to have a primary regardless.
We would have had, I think, what, 16 people?
16 people would have had to file.
Well, right, but still, I think we should check it out, one way or the other. Either we have primaries or we don't have primaries.
I think what she's saying, better safe than sorry.
Right.
Yeah. It's probably good to check.
Because a primary is going to cost the city anywhere from $3,000 to $4,000 to have one, and you pay for it. I mean, our taxpayers will.
Anything else want to put on the agenda?
And I'll be at the Navajo Reservation, so I will not attend, but I will watch when I get back.
Let me see. Okay. Appreciate you letting us know.
If you want to have your candidate, candidate, that's not the right term, but your person...
Perspective.
Perspective member, or planning, planning commission member, I think anyone would like to meet you.
Okay. I will talk to them. Fortunes is always watching it on, because he watches all of our meetings. So, invite you out, David. So. Okay, I have no need for an executive session. We entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
What?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, gosh, you guys leak me.
All on paper say aye?
Aye.
Oh, the same sign. We are adjourned.